Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the Arvada City Council Workshop for June 12th, 2023. And could you take the roll call, please, for us?
Mayor Williams, Mayor Protam Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Faray.
Wait, what? Out of order.
Here.
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 Councilmember Simpson.
I guess I'm last now, here.
Mr. Pfeiffer. I'd like to make a motion to excuse Mayor Williams from tonight's meeting.
Do we need to excuse Councilmember Smith, too?
The motion to excuse Mayor Williams, who had let us know prior to tonight's meeting that he would not be here, and that passes six to zero. And, Mr. Pfeiffer, do we need to have Ms. Faray give an explanation as to the change?
I think you actually should.
Sorry.
So, Mayor Protam, do you need any more information?
I'm clear. I was clear beforehand.
No, I was Councilmember Smith. I am now Councilmember Faray. You can call me either, but I think officially we are Faray.
We're glad to have you.
Hooray for Faray.
That's right. All right. Well, we will get right into our workshops tonight. We've got three scheduled workshops. And for our first one, the Bond Projects Updates, I'll turn that over to Chris Lisberg, who is our Assistant City Engineer. Did I say your last name correctly?
Yes.
Okay. I'm having a hard time tonight with names.
Well, you'll forgive me if I do the same, then.
Yes, we will.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for your time for the second quarter update for our Bond Projects. Just as we rolled out an expanded presentation last time, we want to continue that with not only Ralston Road, 72nd, but also the many utility projects that are either launching or gaining momentum at this time. As usual, our agenda for at least the transportation projects is intended to cover these six subjects. It's pretty representative of the progress on the project. Before I hand it over to Pat Meany to discuss Ralston Road, and I've got the microphone. I'm going to throw out a Go Nuggets tonight. So, Pat Meany, if you want to take it away.
Thank you, Chris. Good evening, Councilmembers. I'll start our Ralston Road Phase Two project update with the right-of-way. First, so in total, we have to acquire 49 parcels right-of-way for this project. I'm happy to inform you that we completed all the right-of-way requirements for this project. Just the only small piece that is left is the temporary construction easement for one particular parcel. We completed the work already in the temporary construction easement. Since we don't have automatic extension for that particular parcel, we are negotiating or we are in the process of making a contract with the parcel owner. Other than that, I think all right-of-way requirements are done. The total budget we spent on the right-of-way acquisition and its services is close to $5.2 million, which is 20% more than initially we planned. Moving to the budget and expenditure, this total project is, initial budget was $18.8 million, including $15.3 million bond funding and $3.5 million of Ora funding for the streetscapes. Right now, due to some additional design changes, scope of work, and also unanticipated issues on the project, the budget is sitting at like $22.5 million. This doesn't include the change order for additional scope of work and the time that we are negotiating with our contract. Moving on to the phasing, this project is initially scheduled to complete in three different phases. The first phase, NTP1, is mainly focused on utility, dry utility relocations. 99% of this work is done. The reason I have a 99% is we still have a few of the gas line relocations that we did not have it in the plans. We have some, we encountered some gas line conflicts on the southeast side of the project. So that's why I still have the dry utility relocations at a 99%. So then, NTP2 is basically Estes Two UConn North Side Widening, which was completed beginning of the, end of the last year, and Garrison to Estes South Side Widening, which is completed in April. NTP3 is a Garrison to Estes North Side Widening that is still pending, and Estes Two UConn South Side Widening is in the process. Moving on to the Ralston Road Phase Two budget status and the schedule, the total project budget, as I mentioned, is $22.5 million. So far, we spent about 76% of that budget. Out of that, construction budget is $12.8 million. We spent about 82% of that budget. This project started in 2021 of May and should have been completed by 2023 of May, but due to additional scope of work and some of the additional design changes, we are anticipating this project should conclude by end of 2023. With all the weather issues, we are still hoping that we can actually achieve this target. Moving on to the completed activities in the past quarter, most of the storm sewer work on the north side and then the south side is also complete. I would say like at 80%. There are still some places like a UConn, Yarrow, and a Balsam, which are currently our contractor is working on storm sewer work and fire hydrant work at those locations. So from Garrison to Estes, I would say actually Garrison to West of Carr Street, we completed bottom two lifts of a south side paving. Our contractor also completed temporary construction easement improvements, and they shifted the traffic onto the south side on 31st of May, and it's, we don't have any complaints so far on that. So that's a major milestone for the project. And right now, they're actually working on pouring a curb and gutter in the sidewalk on the south side. Half of the south side, the flat work is complete. Right now, they're working on the remaining half of the, the main half of the south side of flat work and the curb and gutter related work. Luminate is also working on putting a pedestrian light basis. They're also working on installing the ped lights. So we are coordinating that work as well, but that work has to be done once the sidewalk is complete. So that work is a little bit on, behind the schedule, but we are hoping this should be done quickly once the flat work is complete. Sorry, I, the picture that I have it here is on the freshly paved bottom two lifts on the south side. I just wanted to show this. This is a recent picture. Moving on to the current and upcoming activities, they are actually working at a storm sewer and fire hydrant work, as I mentioned it, at Balsam Street, UConn, and Yarrow Street. The reason they actually have a Balsam Street held up until now is due to the school, when the school was in session, they couldn't close the intersection, so they waited until school has summer break. They're also working on a road base preparation on the south side from Carr Street to the rest of the area, so that they can actually get ready for a paving in August. With all the weather and rain, we are hoping that probably may delay a week or couple of weeks, so we are still not sure how it's going to affect that. And they're also working on asphalt concrete removal on the north side from Garrison to Estes in front of Ralston Central Park. We're also coordinating with the parks on some of the landscaping details, like what type of bushes and then a different type, like what can be approved so that it won't affect any landscaping issues on that side. So that work is also in progress. Most of the work that we have left is on the south side. Once we finish all the storm sewer work, the plan is to prepare the road base and then move on to the bottom two lifts of paving. Once bottom two lifts of paving is done, they'll work on the medians, and then they'll start up doing the top lift of the pavement. So I still see this as a possibility for December completion, so I'll keep you posted if there are any changes. Moving on to the additional scope of work on the Ralston Road Phase Two, I know I already discussed this in my past presentation, but I wanted to give you all an update on what's going on or where we are right now on a contaminated soil. Our contractor finished a contaminated soil hauling in front of a Sinclair on the south side, but they're actually right now excavating soil in front of Ralston Park, which is on the south side of Sinclair. We are anticipating a contaminated soil there as well. So that soil is also going to haul it to the waste management. The additional stormwater work on the south side, the picture that I'm showing is like multiple water storm and a gas line conflicts at that location. So we encountered some of the additional, additional conflicts that we did not have it, have it in the plan. So they're working out the details with the Excel to see whether we have the proper clearance or not. So some of those conflicts are actually making this project a little bit delay, but we are still on a schedule for the critical path items. And moving on to the challenges and risks, I think you have seen this slide before, but exactly, we still have the same challenges. The one addition to these challenges is the weather right now. So we have almost, I mean, all of you guys know, we have a rain almost every day, so we are facing some of the delays due to the rain. I'll start with the private utilities. Even though it took a little bit of more time than we anticipated, most of the private utility relocations are complete. Right now, we have some of the gas line conflicts, as I mentioned, on the southeast side, contaminated soil, and additional stormwater work that is also mostly done. Contaminated soil that we have on the north side is currently, they're actually hauling it to the waste management. The development work, so there are three developers on this project stretch. Two of the developers, we try our best to actually facilitate the utility connections before we put any pavement, new pavement on the project stretch. However, the Ralston Gardens is the recent one, which has a low-cost housing community. We are trying, we are trying to coordinate with the Ralston Garden developer to provide to complete the utility connections before we put a top lift in that stretch, so that they don't have to go through the motor period on the project. Moving on to the public impacts and the road closures, this is where we are having more challenge, because this entire project stretch has 99% of the business owner, our contractor, business owners, and also the school. Our contractor having issues on the continuous construction, because we have to make sure that we are not, we are not affecting the, we are not putting effect on, when school is in session. Also, we are not affecting significant amount, we are not giving a significant amount of inconvenience to the business owners. So we are trying our best to accommodate each and everyone's request and provide a proper access when we are closing the side streets as well. That's what we are trying here. And further, we have public outreach offices, both on Hammond Side and also our communication manager, and I am also trying our best to communicate on a daily and a weekly basis when the road closure is coming, going to come, and if there are any water shutdowns related to the fire hydrant work, and if there are any, anything related to the road closures that is going to affect that particular business owners, we are trying to inform through the door hangers, mail, mail, email communication, and we also updating on our Ralston Road project website. This is a major challenge for us now, because we are working on some of the fire hydrants where we have to close, we have to shut down the water for a full day for the residents, but I'm happy that everybody is so cooperative. So thanks to all the residents who are actually understanding the situation right now. Okay, that's a total update on what we completed in the past quarter, what we are planning for the next quarter. With that, I would like to end my project, my project update, saying that the anticipated completion date for this project is December 2023, and we are still trying to reach that project deadline with all the weather and challenges that we are facing on the project. With that, I would like to conclude my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Mr. Marriott.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Thank you for the presentation. So one of the things you mentioned in two places, both on the budget and on the challenges, I think, is the change orders related to the project, I think, to the contaminated soil and also the scope of work. Do you have any idea what the relative magnitude of the, the cost of those might be?
Little over $3 million.
About $3 million, okay. And that wasn't on, on the budget, so that's all stuff that will need to be added at some point.
Yes.
Okay, got it. And then the other question I had is on the Ralston Gardens project, where they're a little bit behind yet and aren't doing their utilities hookups. Is there any way that as we've done that, and I guess we're already past it, so it's maybe too late now, but to actually stub that stuff already out to their property so that they don't have to remove any concrete or road or anything like that to do that, where that, that part can be pre-done and then charge them for it, or, you know, figure out a way to make that?
We tried that avenue as well, but they were not, there was a little bit of delay from the developer end. So at this point, if our contractor actually has to take up that work, it's going to delay the, delay our project. So that's why we are trying our best so the developer can actually do the work during the nighttime. So our management is actually providing additional resources so that they can actually complete that work during the nighttime, which won't affect the Ralston Road project schedule.
Okay. And, and do you think they'll be able to complete that work before the final paving? So we're not cutting?
I'm hoping. That's what we are trying, and we are helping them as much as we can so that they can complete. We also mentioned about contaminated soil, how they can actually get that testing done, and how can they haul that material to the waste management. We are trying our best so that they can complete the work.
Right, right. Okay, sounds good. I just want to make then a couple of comments. One, I think, if, and you've heard this from me before, but I'll just reiterate it, if there's any way we can have particularly the paving done in this construction season so that the average Arvada resident who doesn't necessarily live there, have a business there, but who drives that road sees it as complete in this construction season rather than having to wait till next spring, I think that would be a really good thing we can do. And, you know, some of the other stuff, whether it's the streetlights or the streetscape and the punch list items and all that, if those flow into next year, I think most residents wouldn't know the difference between complete and not complete. So if we're going to focus on something, let's really try to focus on getting that final paving done in this construction season. Second comment I have is, now that the traffic's flipped over, you can see the work that's been done, particularly I, I recognize the stuff around Field Street or Estes to Garrison, and it looks really good. You know, I think there's some challenges there with some of the elevation stuff, and of course, everything's got to be ADA compliant, but it looks really good. I think that whether it's you guys and your design team or the contractor, whoever's doing it, is doing, I think, a really good job making that stuff fit in and, in a spot where there's not a lot of depth of property there, so it's, it's tight, but it looks, I think it looks, I think it looks really, really good. And then the third comment I'll make is that you must be doing a good job of outreach to the businesses, because I haven't had complaints from them. And particularly by now, with the project supposed to have been complete by now, and from here forward is when they would really be complaining, and I haven't heard any. So I think your team and the construction team's doing a real good job of maintaining people's access, and I'm sure, they are impacted, and we may, you know, in the future, talk about through our IEDA or something, if there's anything that can be done to help them there, but they're not complaining, which means you're doing a good job communicating. So good, good job on that.
Yeah, we are just making sure that they have a proper access even during the closures, either from 57th Avenue or from the Ralston, if they don't have the access from 57th Avenue. And we are also making sure that they have a business open signs on, on, like in the middle of the construction area, so that people know that their businesses are open.
Yeah, yeah, well, good job.
And also, I wanted to point out one more thing. So you probably see a little bit of issues with elevation, because we don't have a top lift yet. So once the top lift is on, so probably you'll see that issue a little bit resolved, so...
I was really speaking more of the elevation, that, you know, the, the challenges on the concrete work that's already done, the, from the gutter back and some of the, it, it looks great. I mean, I think I haven't seen any place where, where it looks anything other than, wow, that looks really, really nice. I think people are recognizing that, so.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you. Ms. Simpson?
Thank you. I actually want to echo Mr. Marriott's point about the businesses along Ralston. My daughter dances, so we've gone into hearts, and a couple of others, and I've actually asked them about the closures directly, and they've had nice things to say. You know, it's difficult, but they, they're making do, and they've been real pleased, and so commendation on that as well. And then quickly, with the environmental remediation and those extra costs, are we able to do a range to try and charge the property owners that caused that contamination for those and not put our taxpayers on the hook?
I think that is already, this happened back in 1990, so the property owner, or their insurance already paid for it. Right now, EPA is already doing the remediation. Maybe we have to contact the EPA. So we are keeping all the information so that we can see whom, we can actually get some money out of it. So we haven't started, but we are keeping all the information on to see how much it's costing and everything.
Perfect. Thanks. I just wanted to make sure that anyone watching knew that we were keeping an eye on that and making sure that we'll be taking care of it. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pfeiffer. Could you remind, so out of the 3 million of the increase of the project through the change orders, 1 million of it was roughly from right-of-way acquisitions, the rest was around design. Could you maybe at least remind us and maybe the audience of, you know, your estimate was about 800,000, it ended up being about almost 2.2 million in design. Can you maybe share what those components were that made that increase, almost 200% increase in that category?
For the design you're asking? So most of the, I think, I know you probably saw 800 versus like a 2 million, that's a shift for the design. We have a significant amount of design changes when the construction is ongoing. Also, we added additional scope of the stormwater network that has to go through the design process. That's where we saw the increase in the design side, design services aspect. So one is the main additional redesigns on the project due to the utility conflicts, and the second one is additional stormwater scope redesign. That's where we spend more money on the design services.
Were the utility conflicts, were those discovered during the construction?
Yes.
Not, you didn't do sub-utility engineering prior to that to know that those conflicts were there?
When we did the sub-utility engineering, we actually did a very basic, there are three levels of utility engineering identification. We did a level one, so that was not enough. Whenever we have our construction contractor started doing the construction, we found a lot more utility conflicts than we have it on the plans.
Did, so through this process, do we have better documentation of the utilities, not just ours, I'm thinking CenturyLink's, Excel's, everyone else's?
Yes.
Do we have better documentation of where they are in our right-of-way?
Yes, definitely. I think we are updating that information as well when we, but, and we also get ASBILs. So when we get the ASBILs, that, that's when we also see where we have the stormwater line and then water line and everything, so.
And was there, through this process, was any of the lines abandoned and removed, or so down the road, we are not like, hey, what's this line? And then you have to spend money to figure out that it's abandoned?
So we found a few of the abandoned lines on the south side, but we contacted the water department just to make sure they are actually abandoned. Either we are actually removing them or we are just keeping it in place if they're not actually obstructing any of our construction, or they are not in conflict with, for our new, not, new pipe work. So we're just leaving as it is, so if they're abandoned. But we are informing our utilities department, just is this abandoned or is it still in service? So.
Okay. Now that works.
Yeah.
It is worth noting, a couple of years ago, before Pat Meany came online here at the city, let alone the project, we were insistent with Excel that when they were moving their lines, that they were to remove it rather than just implement, abandon in place and create more congestion in an already congested arterial.
Yeah, and when we have another project, we'll be looking at the ground and saying, okay, now there's 15 power lines, which ones abandoned, which ones aren't?
Yeah.
I always worry about future projects and how much that'll cost us just with sub-utility issues.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you. That looks like all the questions. I will say, thank you for the update, and every time I drive on that new, even though it's not the top layer, I feel like Mater from the movie Cars. So it's, it's always fun to drive on that new blacktop.
Thank you.
So, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. I'll be presenting the 72nd Avenue update this evening. To start off, I would like to mention that our traffic team, or our transportation team has gotten bigger this year. We've hired three new engineers since February, one of which is David Bernard, and he wasn't able to be here tonight, but he's been working on this project since he started, and he will be taking over the project, and we'll introduce him at the next quarterly update. With right-of-way, nothing much has changed here. We've closed everyone but one parcel. We have signed documents, we're just working through closing with that homeowner. We have extended almost 20 construction easements for six months, so that'll go through October of this year, just to finish up the work in those homeowners' yards. Moving on to budget, our total budget there on the left, we've spent 42% of our budget, $26 million. The owner's rep budget, you can see that we're kind of marching through their budget here. What they have left should, should get us through about October, and so we should expect a change order here to get us through the end of Construction Package Two, and then a change order for Construction Package Three, once we get that underway. Design-wise, you can see we spent pretty much all of our design money, and we're just looking for our design engineer to, to bring us home and get us railroad approval so that we can start CP Three. Here's our construction budget, Construction Package Number One, which is complete. We're just working through our closing documents at this point. Construction Package Number Two, and that's from Swadley to Oak. We're 55% spent there, and right about the same with construction. We are on schedule there, maybe even slightly ahead of schedule at this point. A little bit about construction phasing, you'll see our general timeline there at the top. We are scheduled with, like I said, with CP Two. It is scheduled to be completed in February with landscaping to follow in the spring. I would say we're slightly ahead of schedule there, so I'd be looking to see this package get completed right around the end of the year. And right now, we're estimating Construction Package Three to be complete towards the end of 2026, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later. A couple of photos of our current progress here. The Enterprise Grange on the left there, that's at the northwest corner of Sims and 72nd. Brand-new parking lot for them, little trench drain there to take care of their parking lot and get the water out. On the right there, this is the stairs and new ADA ramp that leads up to the trail that goes into Oberon. That's on the north side of 72nd up towards Oak. Couple of shots of our new wall on the south side, as well as the new cedar fence that we put up. You can see the substantial metal posts, so that's a pretty stout structure at this point. I will point out on the right is what our homeowners see in their backyards. So you see a wall right there, that's about five, six feet tall. That wall gets up to 10 feet tall in certain locations, and then our new fence on top of the wall. On the left here is Quail Street, when we had that longer closure to relocate some utilities and, and repave and realign that road. And then on the right side here, this is the excavation for our wall on the north side. And you can see again, dry utilities that we're kind of fighting with, and our contractor is working with Excel and Comcast and CenturyLink to get those relocated and kind of push them to the back so that we can get a wall installed. A couple more shots of Quail Street. On the left there, storm sewer installation during that big closure we had. And then on the right here, pretty well-finished product. You can see it's realigned with 72nd. We're now perpendicular with 72nd. You can probably remember that there was a bit of a skew coming in there, so much nicer intersection here. Upcoming work, the walls on the north side that I mentioned, new permanent fencing going in and paving along the whole north side. Upcoming closures, we are in the middle of our Oak Street closure, so right now, Oak Street and 72nd is closed. They're doing utility work and reconstructing that whole intersection. With the weather that we've had, we are going to push that closure to Friday, the 16th, and we'll cross our fingers we don't get too much more rain this week so that we can meet that.
Ms. Simpson, did you have a word?
No, I'll say that I don't have any questions.
Okay.
We will have a Sim Street closure, maybe a month and a month and a half out, and that's to pave the north leg of Sims. And that's to pave the north leg of Sims. Moving on to Union Pacific Railroad. We are not too much further than we were last time we presented to you. We did receive comments back on our 60% bridge plans, and that was in April. The good things that have happened since then is that we were allowed to first submit questions to the reviewers at the railroad. And then, a few weeks after that, we were allowed to actually have a meeting with them. And that is the first meeting that we've been allowed to have with their reviewers. We've asked several times in the past and always been denied. But they did allow us to have a meeting over Zoom and our design engineer says he got the clarification he needed on their comments. So we are expecting that this next submittal of 60%, which should happen this week, that we're expecting that it should be approved at 60% and then we can move on through the rest of Union Pacific's process. This is our estimated schedule for CP3. We did bump some of these dates out a quarter or two. So now we're looking at potentially completing the project towards the end of 2026. Previously, I had told the council it would be mid-2026, but with that return of the 60% plans with comments, we're going to bump that out a little bit further and kind of hope for the best moving on through the Union Pacific's process. The risks and challenges, this slide hasn't changed since you last saw it. Again, Union Pacific is always going to be at the top of this one. Supply chain, we are looking better than we have in the past. We discuss this every week. And we have not seen any delays on any materials in the last bunch of months. So it seems like supply is catching up. The steel has, the prices have come down through all last year and even a little bit this year. We do need to get our 60% approval before we would even think about ordering our big steel pieces. And there is a one-year lead time on that. Comcast has given us a few delays in the past. Happy to say that we've worked through most of those issues and there's nothing in the critical path of the project at the moment. As we've discussed before, the project will exceed our budget. And that's the same graph that this council's seen before, that we're seeing 76% increase in our construction costs since 2019. Moving forward, we've done some pricing for CP3. Our finance department has done a lot of work locating additional funding. And of course, the design team has, is always looking at cost savings throughout the project. And here's our spending forecast. You can see we're right about the middle of the graph right now. With our 64.5 million that it was budgeted, we're looking at an additional 30 million needed. And the, in the gray on the right side is the issuing the remaining debt on the original bonds. And I have another slide to go through a little bit later. But we have, or our finance team has begun that process and we actually close at, towards the end of this week on that remaining debt. Citizen feedback is fairly normal for this project. We're looking a little bit over 50 inquiries over the last few months. Most come in, most questions and comments come in about the road closures, general construction. Some about fencing, much less about potholes these days. We're kind of through those times. We continue to work closely with our two schools on the project. We waited for this Oak Street closure till school was out, as that would be a major impact especially to Lincoln Academy there. But we continue to work with all our citizens and get them the answers that they would like. With that, any questions? This picture here is the Oak Street closure right now. This was just about a week or week and a half ago. And you almost can't tell it's an intersection at this point as they're tearing it up.
Ms. Simpson?
Okay, first, I wanted to comment on the structural wall, particularly the stone one-facing residence properties. I just wanted to give you guys a strong commendation. I think it looks very attractive, which is nice that you guys built something that's not just structurally sound but aesthetically pleasing, considering that's a lot of people's backyards. So great job on that, that's going a little bit above and beyond. And so then, my other question is really just about the timing. It's no secret that we've struggled greatly with Union Pacific to get turnarounds on designs. We have submitted months in advance and waited and waited for their comments back to us. And so with the new timeline that's being proposed to us, say we get, we've had the call, we get our 60% back in. Say we finally get that piece through. Do we expect the 90% and then the final to be able to move more quickly than the timeline we've seen? Or is it possible that those timelines could also be drug out at this very extended rate that we've seen, further impacting our future timeline?
I would say that, I mean, it's always possible. But I would say that I think our design team has worked through the major problems with this 60% design and that their plans are, for the most part, much better than 60%. So I would expect that the 90 and 100% plans to go a little bit quicker. You know, with just a couple of reviews instead of five and six like we've seen with 60% here.
Okay, because my concern wasn't so much our team getting things in on time. It was more the response time that we've been seeing. Are we starting to see that improve a little bit?
They're running anywhere between, let me think, it was four to, I don't know, seven or eight weeks, something like that.
Okay.
Around there.
Thank you.
Councilmember Simpson, I will add to that, that the legal team is very engaged in this process as well. We do have outside counsel that we've retained who specializes in this type of work. And if our engineering team feels the need, we are ready to move very quickly to leverage anything that we can on the legal side of things to move the process forward more quickly.
Thank you, I'm very happy to hear that, Ms. Morris.
Mr. Mormon?
Thank you, Mayor Purtem. I'm going to piggyback off of Councilmember Simpson about the fence in the railroad. So starting with the fence, I would echo what she said, it looks really nice. And one of the concerns that you and I have talked with some constituents about is the trespassing as the fence was being built and kids were getting somehow behind there and onto people's backyard properties. Am I right to assume that that has pretty much been fixed now that the fence is complete? Or what does that look like?
I would say it's 99% at this point. We've, so from those pictures, if you can remember, the fence isn't exactly on the top of the wall. It was intended to be there, but we moved it off the wall because of some wind loading problems that were caused by the fence being on top of the wall. And so you can walk along the top of the wall if you wanted to. But we've put some small fences at both ends to deter people, I'll say, from getting around that little bit of fence and then walking the whole way down. So we have done that on both ends
Okay.
of the block so that you can't. And then where the wall is shorter, we've added those little fences as well so that pets can't hop on top of the wall and run the whole way down into somebody else's yard.
Okay, great. And then on the railroad, I guess I have two questions. One is, what is the relative cost of the project for the delay that we've had to struggle with so far?
You know, that's a little bit of a tough question. We definitely have some review fees that are a bit higher from them than we anticipated. And that's just kind of due to the extended time period. As far as construction costs, I mean, they're always going up. So the delays we've seen, of course, you know, it has gone up. All the costs have gone up. But much more significantly, it's the inflation right now than anything. So, yeah, I mean, we've seen cost increases just due to the time, just because everything gets more expensive over time.
Right. And then can you shed some light on what are the key issues that have held up the review at the 60% level?
There are very technical bridge issues. And I wouldn't even say that I understand them fully, but that's why we have our design engineers. And at least in one case, I heard through this last meeting with the reviewers that some of the criteria changed a little bit. And so that was, I don't know how our design engineer would have anticipated that because they didn't see this new criteria till, well, right now. And apparently, it didn't get approved before a month or two ago. So that was a little dismayed. I would have liked to have seen the railroad's reviewers give us that information ahead of time, you know, knowing that we were in the process. But there was definitely a little bit of that that I think has been confusing for our engineer.
Okay, well, thank you for all the work you and your team have put on. And I know it's been a big, a big project for everyone involved, so thank you.
Mr. Marriott?
I just have a quick question for whoever on the team might want to take this, kind of following up with Mr. Mormon. I know earlier this year when we met with our new Congresswoman and when her aide came to one of our council meetings, we, I think we reiterated our questions and concerns. Have we heard back from the Congresswoman or her office about trying to meet with the federal regulators of that railroad to try to get some cooperation out of them and get us some help in that regard?
Yes, Councilmember Marriott, we have heard from her office and we are working on arranging a meeting with her office as well as her legislative assistant that works with the railroads. So that meeting hasn't been, date hasn't been set yet because we're trying to find one that works for everyone, but that is in progress.
Right, okay. It seemed like the sooner we can do that, the better. If we wait long enough, we won't need to. But particularly, you know, we've got this project with the railroad, but someday in the future, we've got a future, very similar project with the same railroad on Indiana Street. Though it would seem like if we can get in place a better way of dealing with this, that would really be beneficial to us.
Yeah, we've got a couple of dates for yet this month in June. So if we can work that out, we'll have that as soon as possible.
Right, okay, thank you.
Ms. Simpson?
One quick follow-up question. In terms of the new bonds we're going to have to issue out to complete the project, are those going to be coming in at a higher rate than the previous issues due to inflation?
I think, well, I mean, interest rates have gone up a little bit.
Yeah, exactly.
I'll lead with this slide now. This was our additional debt on the original bonds, a little bit over 7 million here. It was a competitive bid. We got 11 bids, which was pretty good. And we got a 3.87% interest rate. I think this was right where our finance department thought it would come in. I know that they were a little bit worried it might come in over four, so I think we did okay here. And again, that's closing this week, so we'll have that additional 7 million. And then the additional funds that our finance department is looking at is CIP funds that we already have, as well as, let's see, it was a certificate of participation, I believe it's called, and that we would be able to do in 2025, if I'm not mistaken. And I don't know that process, but I think there's up to 20 million that we can get from that.
Thank you, yeah, 3.87%. Do you know what it was on the bonds previously issued?
I don't. Brian?
It was just over 2.8%. So we had about 1% increase overall.
Not insignificant, all right. Thank you very much.
Those are all the questions I see for now, so if you want to carry on.
Just a quick last slide here. Ralston Road, again, we're working on storm sewer, concrete work on the south side. And we hit a big milestone with the paving on the south side and getting the traffic shifted. And our project completion date, we're looking at is December of this year. 72nd Avenue CP2 is well underway and on schedule. And again, CP3, we're looking at submitting 60% bridge plans again this week. And we're looking at a four-to-six-week turnaround there and looking to push UPRR as much as we can. We still, even with this additional debt that we've issued here, we're still expecting to spend 85% of the bond in the first quarter of next year. And as always, we have our drone flights on the website as well as a YouTube channel. And we get new drone flights about every three weeks.
Thank you very much.
With that, I will turn it over to Mary Stoll.
All right, thank you. So utilities agenda, we will talk about the bonds for water and sanitary sewer. And just a quick reminder, this is in fulfillment of Council Strategic Initiative Number 3, which was to do master plans and then figure out how to implement the master plan findings. Pictures are always fun. The one on the left is of a completed filter. Last time I showed a filter bottom, this is actually a different filter. That filter is in service, has been in service for weeks. But this is one that was recently completed and so it has a new bottom and it has new media, including sand and anthracite. The picture on the right is one of many pictures we have of digging a really deep, long trench in Councilor Mormon's neighborhood. So this is a repeat from last quarter, just a reminder of the bond documents, what we can actually spend the money on. Since it's a repeat, I am going to skip on by. Water projects, no major changes. And that's not a big surprise because most of the water projects are already under contract. And so we know what the costs are going to be. There's not a big change in cost on any of them. And there is no change on what we anticipate spending the bond on. One of them does have a slight increase in cost overall and that is for galvanized service line replacement next year. But that will come from cash rather than bonds, that slight increase. This is new from last quarter. It's just presenting graphically what I showed in the table. The dark solid color, that is what's under contract. That middle bar is a Class 3 estimate. That's a project that is underbid right now, so we're calling that a Class 3 estimate. Because of inflation and materials costs, what I'm saying is I don't truly trust the consultant's cost estimate because things are wild right now. And then that last top bar is Class 5 estimate, meaning we still have a conceptual cost. So the bar on the left is how we're spending the bond money. The bar on the right is the total cost of those projects. This is the same information shown over time. Again, the dark solid color is what's under contract. That middle bar is a Class 3 and that top bar is a Class 5. Really, the takeaway from this slide is that we do expect to spend 85% of the bond by the end of next year. Sewer side's a little different. We all know that that is more in the planning stage than in under-contract stage. So the tables are similar to what I presented last quarter with changes highlighted in yellow. Starting with the first one, the project at 69th and Ward, we have an updated cost estimate from the designer. That project is going to bid this month. So I'll have even more updated numbers on that next quarter. NTL 10, that is the crossing of the railroad on Tennyson Street. That estimate is from our CMGC contractor. So I feel pretty comfortable with that number, even though we're only at 30% design. Will it change? Yes, but I don't have, I don't think it'll go up hugely, at least crossing. Yes, but I don't have, I don't think it'll go up hugely, at least crossing my fingers. We are crossing three railroads in one shot by tunneling. But that's why we have a CMGC approach going on, because the contractor's involved right now to help us with the best and most cost-effective way to do that. And then that last one, that moved up from the planning stage last quarter. That was on the planning slide and now it is under design.
So these costs, these, these are cost changes?
Yes. Well, or change in timing, either change in cost or change in timing. So the first two are a change in cost and the last one is a change in time, is, has moved from planning to doing.
So maybe it'd be helpful if we knew what it was changing from?
That is fair.
Just because I, it's hard for me to determine, did it go up 300%, 400%, 50%? Did you add one more year to that line?
So if I, if I go line by line, preliminary design is on track, no changes. CRT 6, the estimated completion has not changed, but we went from, don't hold me to this, I want to say five million to eight and a half million. NTL 4 has not changed. We still expect substantial completion in August with landscaping to follow because it's not a good idea to plant grass in August in this part of the country. NTL 10 went up significantly.
From, from what?
I don't remember off the top of my head. I'm happy to get that for you.
Yeah, if you don't mind, maybe we could put it in the memo. But in the future, when you come back on the slide, could you just
Absolutely.
highlight the changes from what it was and to what it is?
Yes, absolutely.
A little bit more, thank you.
And then CRT 7, the only change on it is that it's moved from planning to, to doing. So the next slide is what is planned on the sewer side. And that top one is crossed out because as part of the preliminary design work, we have determined that we can defer it for easily 15 to 20 years. And given that this is a lot of money in a lot of places, that seemed wise to do, so that is what we are doing.
Mary, what specifically is that?
That is upstream of the project we're currently doing at 81st and Kipling.
Okay.
And the project itself would go from that upstream end under the canals into the next neighborhood. And the piping is in good condition. It's PVC, it's only 40 years old. And we do expect 60 to 70 years on PVC pipe. It is undersized. It is also 20 plus feet deep with no services on it. So we're comfortable letting it go to what we call a surcharge situation where it's no longer flowing by gravity, but the pipe itself is completely full. But we're not at risk of spillage because it's so deep and there's no services on it.
No service lines, yeah, okay.
The project at 76th and Sheridan is on track. No changes from what I presented. We do anticipate releasing the RFP for consulting on that this month. CRT 9 is highlighted. I should have probably highlighted NTL 2 as well. The north trunk line is kind of in flux right now. We're in the middle, like literally right in the middle of that preliminary design. And we're trying to figure out alternative alignments that we prefer and how we package them. And that NTL 2, we may need to package with the next downstream segment based on an alternative alignment, in which case CRT 9 would get bumped from this bond. And then in answer to your earlier question, Councilor Pfeiffer, we have bumped NTL 8 off of this bond to accommodate the increases in cost on NTL 10 and CRT 6.
Might be helpful to tell us where these are too. Maybe you need a map with them, but go back to-
There's a map at the end, but sure.
The CRT 9, what was changed on that one?
That it might get bumped from this bond.
CRT 9 as well. So NTL 8 and CRT 9.
That's a total of about six million between them.
Okay. And what is CRT 9?
It is northeast of Sims and 72nd. I'm sorry, northwest of Sims and 72nd.
Okay. Thank you.
And NTL 8 is Sheridan and Hidden Lake. Similar to the water, we are presenting sewer in graphical form. Again, the solid line is what's under contract. The middle is roughly a class three and then the top is class five. You'll notice the error bars on this are much larger than they were on the water side. And that's a reflection of we're more in design and planning than we are in the doing that we are on the water side. And then also presenting it in time. Also, we expect to spend about 85% by the end of December. But you'll see that that is not as concrete and as assured as it is on the water side because less is under contract right now. Next slide is not about bond projects, but I did want to do an update on the four priority projects from the presentation last year. This is actually no change from last quarter. Alkire Lift Station, we are still expecting to get everything on site by the end of August with construction starting in September. And the contractor really thinks it's only about three months to get things done. And that kind of makes sense. The only thing we're really quote building is a new wall around the generator. Everything else is inside. 81st and Kipling is nearing completion. Particularly with the pipe, I would expect, as I said, we, I have no doubts that we'll hit substantial completion in August. Trees and grass probably will follow because that's when you plant things, is later. Sheridan 76, that's the manholes we all, that we all looked in. Those locking lids were installed and as I said, design RFP will be issued this month. And then crossing the railroad tracks at Tennyson, 30% design is not only complete, but we have provided our comments on that. The CMGC contractor is attending all our design meetings and providing input. And it's moving forward on the schedule the consultant gave us. So this is, this map is slightly modified from the one last quarter. It took off the project near Hidden Lake and has changed the project at Sims and Ralston Creek, which is Davis Lane Park, to being ongoing because it is now under design. Our takeaways, this has not changed. The water side is mostly in construction, sanitary sewer. We are on track with the robust plan I presented last quarter. Again, things are in $20, $23 in our class five unless noted otherwise. And on both sides, it's not the entirety of the need that we presented a year ago from the master plans. And with that, are there any questions?
Thank you. Mr. Marriott?
I just have a quick question. I know one of the, as we were contemplating doing all these improvements, particularly to the sanitary system, one of the, the reasons we were doing it was because of water infiltration during storm events. And so we've just had, of course, a pretty vigorous wet spring with a couple of storm events. Are there any lessons learned or anecdotes or anything from this recent rainfall we've had about how, how we're performing? I mean, did, did everything go about as we expected or were there surprises in there?
So I have not seen the most recent meter data from Metro, which is the metric I would use, but I'd like to defer to Sharon.
Hi, I can speak to the, the couple anecdotes here on, on issues we're seeing associated with infiltration. Specifically, the Alkire Lift Station. So you know, that's the lift station that serves the northwest part of the city where most of the growth is happening. We have a project going on that will expand the capacity of that. The team has a backup pump ready, that's trailer mounted in case we need it. And just twice this week, we've had the third of three pumps fail. And we've had to go on, have an emergency response, an urgent response. We had two other pumps running. But we've had to, just in the past week, deal with things like that that are, they alarm a high level alert. They'll alarm a pump in these two cases. So definitely activity happening on the operation side. But I would say that there's nothing, nothing we're seeing that's, should I even say it, failing? If we can knock on wood, the system's keeping up right now. So that's just a couple of examples.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much. I don't see any more questions for the updates on the bond projects. A lot of stuff going on in many different sectors. So we appreciate the work that the teams put into keeping our infrastructure alive and well.
David, I'm sorry, I, I didn't look at my notes. May I ask one other quick question?
Yes.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't think to ask this earlier. In one of your earlier slides, you had a, an item on there about the, the lead and galvanized service line program. Have we developed a program yet for the, those service lines that are those wrong materials? I know you have a, an item on there and a, and a cost. But have we developed a program of, are we just paying for all of that? Or is the homeowners paying for some and we're paying for some? Or what exactly are we doing there?
Again, I'd like to defer to Sharon.
Thank you for this question. We're preparing cost estimates for what it would take for a couple of different options for the city to proceed with. One option will be what Denver Water is currently doing, which is paying for the service line replacement for those lead and galvanized service lines in Denver. We've got a pretty good estimate right now of the number of, of lines. And we're doing some additional potholing right now. That's going to even better fine tune that estimate. But before we make any decisions, we want to make sure that we've got the cost associated with the sort of Denver, Denver Water model and then one or two alternatives that would cost less for the city, but would also require more investment of personal funds from the property owners. So we're not quite there yet, but it's in the works and we'll be bringing it to council for consideration. Thank you.
That makes total sense that we hadn't done it yet. Okay, thank you.
I'd like to add that that's actually, there's a two-step portion of that regulation. And one is that we do a study on our finished water chemistry and that is underway now. So that's the first portion and that's the portion being paid for by bonds.
Great, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Really appreciate it. All right, now we'll hear a workshop. I don't know if you want to speak to both workshops, but I'll turn it over to Lori Gillis, our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Jones. This is that time of year again where we kick off our budget process. And part of that process is kicked off with looking at our 10-year models for both our capital improvement plan and for our operating budget. This year is a little bit different. And so I want to start this process by just saying that out loud. We are in the second year of a two-year biennial budget. Typically, in biennial budgets, that second year provides some relief. So you go with this two-year budget and you make minor modifications to the second year, which is what we're headed into for 2024. However, for the past several years, between ARPA, CARES and other changes, taxation on internet sales, we've made pretty major changes to that second year of the budget for the past few biennial budgets. This year, I've directed staff and our department heads to minimize their changes to the budget in the second year of the council-approved 2023-2024 budget. We want to have just minimal refinements from what you approved last year, minimal position requests, minimal asks. So you won't see the changes that you've seen in the past. We've had to make those changes when we were receiving federal dollars and significant changes in our revenues. The other thing that's different than what we've experienced for the past several years is our revenues are flat. So when you say our revenues don't have that big trajectory, so federal dollars and other changes, but on top of that, we have inflationary impacts on the expenditure side. So we're balancing the budget, keeping a balanced budget with some different factors than we've had in the past. So as we go through this next process, it's going to be a little bit different as you're not going to see these long lists of new requests and you're not going to see a lot of changes in, in projections. We're doing refinements and we're going to keep you with us as we go through the process to see what we're seeing in those changes in revenues. Part of this comes from the council directions for a financial resiliency strategic results. How do we continue to provide our core services into the future, knowing that our trajectory for revenues and expenditures are changing? So our focus this year will be on that financial resiliency piece while we're maintaining a relatively similar 2024 budget that you saw as part of last year's biennial budget process. Does that make sense? It is different. It will feel as different to our team as it does to council because this is a change and it's actually back to what would be more normal for a biennial budget process. And with that, I will hand off to Brian Archer.
Thank you. Mr. Archer, it's good to see you tonight.
It's good to see you all. Thank you, Ms. Gillis, for that introduction. And tonight I'm joined by Deputy Finance Director Deb Nielsen. She's actually going to take this first piece and then I will jump in for the second piece. Thank you.
Good evening. So I will go through the 10-year CIP budget with a few revisions from what you saw last fall. So as far as revenue changes, we have updated the sales tax receipts for, for 2023-24 going forward. They are pretty flat. However, there are some increases. And just as a reminder, 20% of all sales tax has to go to either CIP or debt service. So you will see a small increase to the CIP funding due to the little bit of increase that we did make in sales tax. This slide just shows up some of the updates that we have made and how it affects the different areas. As you can see, we have the 2023 sales and use tax bond payment. This is updated for the actual payments with that closing of that bond this week. We also have, if you recall, last fall, we did add to about $200,000 a year to the CIP for median renovations within the city. That's on here. We have, we also anticipate issuing the $20 million COP in 2025 after we pay off. The COP is in 2024. So those are all figured into the CIP updates and what the model looks like. We will be, this will allow us to put some money towards those projects such as Ralston Road, 72nd Avenue and the Myers Pool for additional funding for those overages that we are seeing on those projects.
Ms. Ray?
That's really weird. Getting used to it. Just a question on the median renovation. Just to confirm that when we're doing these renovations, we're not adding any water to the medians. It's just being renovated, is air escaped?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Correct. The one change on the 10-year, a little bit more in detail on the 98 101 money or the 20% of the sales tax. We did update ADA and added about $55,000 a year for Parks ADA. So that line has been updated. Otherwise, everything else has remained the same on this slide. Then we're going to go into a little bit more detail on CIP administration. There's no updates from last year here. And this is a list of all of the current projects that are in CIP administration right now. And then we, the CIP ADA compliance. We have ADA compliance for facilities and streets. We've added a little bit more to the DE compliance on streets. That's the only change on this slide from previous. You will see the ADA for Parks on the Parks side as we move forward. Here is a list of all the projects that are in the ADA compliance, the current projects and, you know, their current budget, what's, what's been spent and expect big completion. Traffic signal updates, there is no change here. The bridge program, there are no updates from last fall. Sidewalks, trails and mobility, also not seeing any updates there. And transportation, we have added a little bit of money for the transportation master plan and implementation. And here is a listing of all the current projects, just like the other areas. There's quite a bit going on. And CIP streets and the current projects there. And CIP streets and the current projects there. CIP parks, as I stated before, we have added that approximately $55,000 a year for parks ADA program there. And here is a listing of all the current projects within parks CIP as well. Then we have a slide on our historic funding for the streets fund. As you can see, in 2022, we spent almost $15 million in the streets maintenance program. We have, you know, worked very hard to increase that funding and that spending, you know, And here is the 10-year model for the streets, Streets Maintenance Fund, and where we expect those dollars to be spent for 2023 through 2032. This does not include the supplemental funding for the ADA compliance within streets that was shown earlier, but that is not included in this, in these amounts. And just the detail on the funding for the streets fund. Enterprise funds, as far as CIP, there are no updates at this point here. This is what you saw last fall. And a listing of all the major projects within enterprise funds. You've got the Denver Moffett Project, the system upgrades, Highway 93 water storage tank, distribution upgrades, the smart meters are on here, wastewater project. We saw a lot of these updates with Mary just a little bit ago. Do you have any questions on?
Any questions? I don't see any on my board, so I'm guessing that you answered all of our questions through the presentation. So thank you.
Okay, while we're switching, just want to offer, the reason we provided all the information is to demonstrate the amount of work and effort that's going on in this organization and what's being planned. And so as you can see, it's quite a lot. And to reiterate what Ms. Gillis is saying, is we're doing our best to land the plane. So, do you guys need a stretch, or you just want me to power through?
Let's go for it.
All right, go Nuggets. So, update to the 10-year model, schedule of events. Tonight, we'll present a revision. Again, this revision is just taking 2022 actuals, pushing them through the model, and some assumption changes. Next couple of months, we'll do our budget work. We'll present that to you all in September, have a couple of workshops, and then ultimately the adoption on the 16th. So now the models run for nine years. I know we call them a 10-year model, but they actually run 2024 through 2032. We do not add one year. We add the two years during the two-year cycle. And these are the overall assumptions. They should look very familiar to you. We have not changed any of the pay and health assumptions yet. We did add inflation. We put it back up to 3% on our ongoing accounts from one and a half, which we were seeing historically, and that will help offset a little bit. But as you heard just 20 minutes ago, inflation is much higher than that. And so we'll continue to talk about that. This is the revised general fund. Councilmember Pfeiffer, I am hearing you ask where it was last time, and so I will tell you. At the end of last year, we had about 1.5 million. We're now at 6.6 million. If you remember back to the presentation during the carryover, we talked that we would have about $5 million in one-time funds to carry forward. That represents that. We have not programmed spending any of those dollars yet, and so they do now sit in the end of the 10-year model. If we take a look at the general fund revenue assumptions, again, not making any changes. Graphically, we'll talk about sales tax and auto use tax here in a minute. Property tax, as you're well aware, Senate Bill 23303 will put a vote on the ballot this fall, and we'll just see how that comes out. That could be as high as a 25% increase if that vote fails. If that vote approves, we're looking at probably around a 5% increase in property tax. We have built this based upon the lowest common denominator, so we built it assuming the vote is approved, and assuming the state of Colorado will fill our bucket back up, and we will get to about 5.6%. Building revenues are certainly slowing, but they're returning to more normal, and that's what we budget for every year. And we did increase revenues for interest on a short-term basis, and then brought them back down to normal averages. Graphically, this is a sales tax graph. It'll look very familiar. We've talked about this a lot. I just want to point out one thing. You see one red bar on that over a very long period of time. That's not normal. We usually have a few years where it will be flat or negative. We have built in a slower growth model in the future years with a couple of small increases in '24 and '30. We're hoping that this will continue to look like this. Deb spoke to this just a minute ago about the delta between what we have in the budget and what we're expecting. A very small increase, and that allocation has been pushed through this current model.
Hey, Brian, can I ask you just a quick question on sales tax while you have it? We're almost six months through 2023, so you've got some results there. Obviously, it's not necessarily reflective of the whole year, but are you, or what you're seeing actually jiving with what you're presenting to us here?
We are on the sales tax side, certainly, and I'll talk to that here in just a couple of minutes. But to answer your question, we're at 5% right now.
Okay.
We budgeted three and a half.
Right.
But it is coming down each month.
Right, okay. All right, thanks.
Auto use, you will notice a little more colorful graph. It did used to run in about a seven to 10-year cycle. We may get back to that. And so we are expecting a flat year for '23, a negative year in '26, and then very slow growth throughout the next few years after that. A lot of our auto use tax growth came from our population growth, and we're expecting lower population growth.
I thought that came from John buying cars.
Well, Councilmember Marriott's certainly helping, but I don't know if he can continue that.
Well, if he turns red, just call him and tell him to buy some more cars.
I still, I'm still buying.
Good, good. Keep that going.
You'll notice a delta in the auto use, and we did.
Hey, Brian.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Go back one slide. I'm just curious, the assumption in '26, what are you drawing on that? Is that just the algorithm that carries out that's going to say your population's decreasing?
No, it's not a population decrease. It's just following the old historic, every seven years or so, we'll see a setback of that.
Oh, so you're just following?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, there's nothing else magical to that.
Okay, thank you.
And I can promise you it'll be wrong, but we'll continue to work on it.
It needs to be wrong.
Councilmember Marriott, this is a little bit more to the question you asked about what are we seeing with approximately five months' worth of data. And so you can see on the sales tax side, we're at 5.1%, expecting three and a half. General use tax, this is actually a very good sign for us, and the business community, they're reinvesting, and so that's up this year. So we hope that continues. Auto use, we're expecting zero. It's up 11%. We're not feeling like this is going to continue. When we talk to many people, we're hearing less and less cars being purchased. Building use tax is down 6.2%, but we were expecting that to return to the budget, so that is okay. Property tax, we just talked about. Court revenues, we were expecting these to be flat. They're actually up a little bit. I do want to point out that court revenues were significantly down last year. This is not a revenue source for us. This is just a tracking mechanism to let everybody know. And then HUTF was also off a lot, but it's improved a little bit. A better way to look at this is the net change in our revenues over the last 10 years, excuse me, over the future 10 years. Positive means we've adjusted upward, obviously, negative downward. And you can see, anything auto-related is down a lot. So auto use tax, HUTF. Road and bridges up a little bit. This one is a little dangerous, because the county can certainly adjust that at any time, and so we're very careful in adding additional budget related to that. Franchise fees is up. Many of you would ask why, with Comcast and other phone services heading down. This is directly related to Excel and the activity and the charges on that, on the line fee and other items. And so you can see overall, when you net all this out, it didn't change the 10-year model very much. Individually, it changed a lot, but in the aggregate, not very much. Kind of like sausage being made, so nobody wants to know. If you look at the other changes, as we get a little bit more into this detail, pay estimate at 3%. HR's work is projecting this at 3.3%, so we're in the ballpark. Healthcare at 5%. We're trending at 7.7. It's the first year in a long time we've actually trended up. We're having more babies in this organization as we're getting younger, and the older population is having more surgeries. And so we're working on this trend, but if you remember, we've had five years, I need to knock on something, a very positive activity here with no increases. And so to have a little bit of a trend up is kind of to be expected. We're still working on capacity and under the taking lasting care. We were able to complete, or at least put budget aside for two of these items. Certainly, you've heard a lot about street maintenance. You'll hear a lot more about that here in the future. We were able to add a million and a half, but we know that number needs to go up, and so we'll continue to talk about that.
Ms. Frey?
Thank you. The 5% healthcare costs, I know we talked about opting out of family, so is that accounting for the expectation that we are going to have paid parental and maternity leave?
It is. That's built in.
Okay, thanks.
So that completes the general fund. We'll quickly run through the other funds unless there's any other questions.
Let's see.
So Parks Fund, you'll notice, is negative at the end of our 10-year model, but last year, it was negative about 6.5 million, so we were able to really reduce that. The Parks Fund has worked very hard on reducing costs and properly aligning the charges for field maintenance. We also had a quite a large increase in open space revenues and a quite a large increase in the transfer from the general fund. All that put together, we're very, very close at the end of this 10 years and hope to have this balance when we bring it back to you. Just spoke about all of that. Police tax increment, you'll notice a TI. The first one, pretty close at the end of the year, so, or the end of the tenure, so they're spending all of those dollars, doing a very nice job on that. In the second increment, a little bit larger, but they do have some needs that they need to work through. And so they're working on certainly identifying what positions they're going to make permanent in the 10-year model, what they're going to keep on a short-term basis. They also got to see an increase with sales tax and auto use, just like everybody else. They basically act like a mini version of the general fund. Recruitment and retention's still a challenge. Much of the savings you're seeing in these funds are built upon salary savings from the current period that we roll right back into the fund and put it towards police activities. We spoke a little bit about water. Mary and her team spoke a little bit about the utilities fund, so I won't spend a lot of time. You'll notice that the water fund does show, some funds at the end of this 10-year model, they will certainly put those to use. This is programming in an estimated 7% fee increase next year. That number's probably going to be low, and so we will be talking about that during this budget cycle and bringing that information to city council. Does program a $2 base service fee increase, all of the items that were presented to council. And then, we talked about SDCs, and this does delay this until October. And so building that in certainly will have a short-term cost, and I think council heard about that last week. And then it did issue the $50 million in 2022. On the wastewater side, again, some savings on the wastewater, but again, these are timing. These will be put to use almost immediately. You heard about the increased costs, and again, same pieces of information. Do want to point out, this assumes a 6% increase every year, and we certainly know that's probably going to be low as well with inflation, and so we'll be bringing those back to council this fall. Stormwater is in the negative right now. Again, this is a timing from the various projects, and we'll work on updating this through the CIP process, which actually starts tomorrow. And so we will be bringing back an updated model. And that's why that item is in orange. Solid waste, there were some questions about this earlier. That model is breaking even with the replacement of carts in 2031. Is that correct, Deb? Programmed placement, cash program replacement of carts in 2031, so we're trying to build to that number, and then that'll be a pretty large spend. We will revisit this as we go throughout this year, and then assuming we do have a rate increase, we will build that into this model and present it back to you. Our large item events are very, very popular, and we have to make sure that we're also budgeting for those. Right now, we are able to make them work. As their popularity continues to grow, our costs continue to grow on those, and we'll have to see how that plays out as well. But we feel very confident that we can make them work.
Mr. Morgan?
So I heard anecdotally, I think, from maybe in Republic, that our participation rate has gone up. Do you have a record of that?
Participation rate on the large item event?
No, 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 in the service, in the residential service.
Oh, the number of people that are participating. I know it's growing. I don't have the specifics on that. I don't know if the team does, but we can certainly get them to you.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I know a lot of people, as they get their new bill from their various entities, are realizing that they're getting much larger increases than we were able to get here at the city, and so they're looking to move. Golf course fund, we will end on this fund. Some exciting news with them. You'll notice that they're in the positive starting in the year 2027. You can't see that because it wouldn't fit, so they've moved back a year. They had a very good year, and they're hoping to continue that work. And so they're also in the positive at the end of the model. And so hopefully by, you'll also notice that they're cash positive at the end of this year, so they're not borrowing money anymore, which is a wonderful thing, and so we'll hope that that continues. And so just again, talking about strategic opportunities, these should look very familiar. Last year, council was able to direct us to add additional money to data security and building structural security, and we helped out there. We didn't obviously finish those. And then the rest of those items should look very familiar, because there's no updates to any of them. So, any questions?
Any questions from council? I don't see any highlighted boxes here. Again, you know, it's a, it's a very intriguing and interesting model, and it's good to see at the end of those 10 years, how many of those are actually positive or balanced out. So great work by the team to keep us fiscally sound.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones.
All right. Well, that is the last of our workshops for tonight. So anything from Ms. Gillis?
Just that our next meeting is not until July 10th. We have a holiday on the 19th, CML the next week, and then another holiday. So plan for July 10th.
Great, and it's going to be a pretty small agenda, I've understood.
It's going to be huge.
Wishful thinking on my part. Ms. Morris?
Nothing from me.
All right, thank you. We are adjourned.